Board of Commissioners, Board of Directors Work Session for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by a full complement of District Commissioners, Vice Chair Commissioner Amtrice. Commissioner Jerry Willie here with my armostra. It's not a very nice fan of white. Commissioner Nafisa Faiyeh, Commissioner Jerry Willie.
Jason. I'm here twice. Evidently, I have your vote. Hey, hey.
Perhaps it's down to authority or approval.
Man, you got, got my view with that M and M cookie over there. I'm jealous. Okay, so we're going to start with an easy topic. Let's see if I managed to not mess up dates and titles here. Appointment to the Rainbow Lane Special Road District. Oh, there she is. I saw her earlier.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We are here today to talk about Rainbow Lane Special Road District, member three appointments. Rainbow Lane is a special road district out near Highway 219 and Shoals Ferry. And they have their own board, Citizens Advisory Board. And they have three members that rotate membership every three years. This year Craig McDonald is the member of three appointments. And we are here to just let you know about that. And that we will be back on November 4th to ask you to approve that. Do you have any questions?
None. No, very thorough materials, nice and straightforward onward how we go.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Great. So that'll get them to a November business meeting. She was estimating it might last as much as five minutes and she beat the clock. So we're going to move then to the next topic, investment policy and cash management overview.
Also aiming for five minutes.
Oh, no, no, no. No, our auditor was like that. Financial and the program.
This will be the high point of the day.
Oh, do we need to give you guys some more elbow room?
Yeah, come on down. All right.
Don't be stealing Jerry's cookie.
No.
Catherine intends.
Take some M and Ms off of there. All right, well, good afternoon again, board. I'm John Stare, the Chief Financial Officer. I'm joined today by Jan Wodring, who's our either our financial advisor, President and Senior Advisor of Government Portfolio Advisors. I also have Frank McDonald. And also with GPA.
Yep.
And Sarah Keane, Deputy Chief Financial Officer. I just want to highlight this really is a good discussion. It's a great time to look at investments once a year. We do bring our investment policy to the board once a year. And so we like to consider that policy as we're going through discussion today. GPA provides us support in determining appropriate investment portfolio strategy. They evaluate economic and market drivers to support our investment recommendations. Provide trade execution and settlement assistance. They monitor our portfolio's compliance to state statutes and county investment policy. Provide comprehensive reports and perform due diligence reviews of current and proposed brokers. But most importantly, they optimize liquidity of our, of our portfolio. And help us execute the investment strategy. It's the foundation of keeping our county running. Fine. Our other purpose today. Provide general understanding of how we manage our cash. Provide an update of our portfolio performance to benchmarks. And to provide an opportunity for discussion on our investment policy. The investment policies are used and updated annually. That opportunity. And questions, I think for us to consider, for your board to consider. Strategy and diversification does our portfolio align with our risk tolerance. When we think about risk is mitigated by diversification, recognized credit ratings, portfolio average credit rating, and diversification and credit exposure constraints. And we also liquidity risk. No investments greater than five point two five years. That maximum weighted maturity not exceed two and a half years. What if these funds are in a state? Then we also have a core funds that are managed, so. It's going to how we work the policy to make sure we're within risk tolerance. And making sure we're doing the right thing with our active pair of dollars. With that introduction, I will turn it over to Jan, talk through our portfolio.
Okay, well, it's nice to be in front of you. I haven't been in front of this committee for a long time. So it's always good just to get information. And then if you have questions, both John and Sarah have been working really diligent on what should you be seeing? So I thought today we could go through our report and a queue and just so you have that information. It's all about transparency. You guys are setting the policy guidelines of the portfolio. And knowing what you need to know about the structure is key. We're seeing a lot of news on interest rates right now, and those interest rates impact the earnings that we have on this portfolio. And so it's really your higher level of just how is it being managed? Why is it being managed this way? And it's really based on history. Just a little background on government portfolio advisors. I am really proud that Washington County has been one of our clients since 2008. I founded GPA in 2014 with my business partner as a woman owned Oregon based firm. Today, we are now in nine states. We manage over $30 billion. We are very diligent at managing the types of clients that we work with. It's all public funds. This here is a list of our Oregon clients. And we just continue to grow with the relationships that we have. And we're really become an extension of your team staff. And that's kind of our little golden sauce is that we are right there next to John, next to Sarah, next to David on what you guys need and then making sure we get you those tools. We have a large depth of expertise within our team that's make sure that you have best in class in any of these questions. When I look at the investment portfolio too, I think the easiest way to tie the structure of your portfolio is you spend so much time on budgets. You're looking at your budgets out one year, three year, five years. Well, our side is really the opposite side of that. That's your liabilities. And then we're making sure that the portfolio is structured in a manner that makes sure those obligations are met. But at the same time, making as much earnings on those dollars while you have them. So when we talk about different portfolio structures or types, that's what helps us to make quick decisions within your team. Because we have it set up that way to be able to answer. And then if you're out buying a building or something, or something's changing, we just had a great meeting with your department heads to get a better understanding of why we are asking the question about cash flow. Because it matters how we're investing it. And that was a really positive meeting that we had with the team and helped them to understand why we were asking them the questions. So the main focus that we're always looking at in your policy, which is your policy that dictates the investment structure. It's guided by statute, state statute, and it's guided by your own risk tolerance. All public funds are guided by these three primary goals. Keep the money safe. Preserve your principal. Keep your money liquid that needs to remain liquid. So you always have dollars on hand and you're not having to sell securities. And then focusing on return. Over the years, people have gone back and forth and visit our responsibility to achieve return. I will keep putting my fist down and saying it's absolutely our job to make sure that you're making market rates return. So that's what we have structured for your portfolio. The board's role is really you're the stewards. You're the ones who set the, set the guidelines with the recommendations from your team. The policy and procedures are then implemented by the finance team and they have delegations of duty out to us to help execute just on the investment part of the portfolio. So when we're talking about your investment policy, this is guy, I do serve on the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. I've been the longest term member on that board. It's an appointment by the State Treasurer and our role on that board is to oversee policy structure for all local governments in the state of Oregon. So every policy has to come through that door. Yours was reviewed a long time ago, but meets all those standards. It doesn't need to go back once it's been reviewed. So your policy is really dictated by the types of securities that you can buy. We are recommending no changes to your policy. We did a good rewrite last year to make sure that we are consistent to how we are managing it. So there's no recommendations for change. It was more a background for you to know that this does need to come as a consent item or in front of you once a year by statute. So you're allowed to invest out as long as five and a quarter on a final maturity. The risk parameter, that weighted average maturity of two and a half years, that's really the risk control. That's how much the portfolio will move given exposure in the market. We manage much shorter than that. And that's what you want to see. This would be our maximum and we're inside of that on all levels. And then kind of the building discipline of the strategy, we start with the policy and the county's preferences. Then we look at cash flow. So David, team and all of us are looking right now as you have tax turnover time coming in next month. Where, what money needs to stay on hand for your ongoing operations? That goes into our account called Cash Match. And we're really having fun really getting deeper on that, understanding how that should be structured. And then we have a core investment portfolio and that's the portfolio that is for the long term to match those liabilities that you have. And that's managed around a two-year average maturity, which I'll point out to you. It's the investment portfolio that has the most price movement and volatility in it, but it's also the anchor in the portfolio that will smooth out your interest income over time. So when we look at those components and our terminology, I thought this would just be helpful for background on your reports. You have the liquidity, which is your day to day cash at the state pool, the core, which is your longer term investment. And then we do have a cash match that needs to be your one year and shorter liabilities. And then you currently have a bond project fund as well. So all those portfolios, we're making the individual investments for with the guidance from the finance team. Everything is done on a non discretionary basis. So we need approval from your team to make any investment. We send them a proposal. They know why we're doing it. They approve it. We save that in writing. So it's a, it's a little machine that we have going. This page here shows the changes in market values and volatility. The green is that up and down when you get tax receipts. The blue looks a little tight there, but that's our cash match that we fund during tax time and it goes down to zero. And this, the key of this page is to show you that we have components and guidelines that make sure that we don't violate or change our strategy. So with the core investment fund, we're targeting to build that up to 740 million from 685 million. And then we have a maximum of 850. So that keeps us from going in our annual analysis. It keeps us from investing too much. By stepping back and looking at the, that the portfolio structure. The county does continue to grow like all of our counties and cities across the nation. We are expecting for a flattening of this growth, given the deductions of less federal funding. We've really, ARPA money is spending down into 2026. So that's part of our process in our annual review. It is, but what's going to change here at the county? And that's what we're expecting for. And then last before I go into the actual report, what makes a healthy portfolio? This chart on the right is interest rates. And I've always said, I'm going on my 45th year of managing money for public funds. I've been around for a while. And this is what happens. It goes up, it goes down, it goes up, it goes down. And in managing the money that we're dealing with, which is very short and the time of when you get it and when you don't, it can get really emotional if you try to outguess the market. Our job is to work with the market and help advise the county on how to keep those income as stable as possible. What you're going to see today on our reports is we, we achieved a really high rate of return this last year. That was because of higher interest rates overall and then some of the structure. So our management of your expectations is going to be, we probably hit the peak, but we're still managing it effectively and we will move with how these rates move. Our goal is not to move as rapidly as some of the, the shorter paper. So our quarterly report is presented and I think the team here has a discussion on how you may like to see these reports. If you want to see them in your policy, it does say that you will have them. So this is a, the first thing that comes up on our reports is your compliance report. So this is you seeing that yes, you are meeting the policy that you've dictated and structured and how that composite is allocated out. There's two points to that. One is reflecting the types of securities that you can buy. And then the second page is on the maturity structure and credit securities that you can buy. You are limited to a very high quality corporate criteria of double A or minus or better. We also do put a ESG filter on for all of our Oregon clients. This is important. So we make sure to try to, to keep that at a high quality. It's a pretty limited list when we break it down that way, but we still use it where, when we have those opportunities in the portfolio. And then here's how it's structured. So we have the core investment portfolio. This is as of June 30th, your fiscal year end. We're yielding about a 379. That has gone up just a touch. Our goal, that's up from about 299 last year. So we had a huge movement upwards because of that interest rate shift. And I call it anchoring. We now have your main investments anchored at a 368. If we were to go out and buy that same portfolio today, we would be more like a 340 or a 350. And I always get this question when I come to this level, boy, that seems so low. But it is not low. Historically, we have been trading around a 1% rate. We just came out of that 1% rate in 2021. So I'm really excited to be able to see these 4% kind of numbers that we have because that's earnings to the county. And then we have a cash matched account that's on its lower side here. That basically goes down to zero and then we refill that up. And then we have the liquidity component. So by us dissecting those, we're able to communicate really clearly with the finance team on how we're investing those securities. Then we look at maturity. So the, the tools we have to work with are maturity diversification and, and asset allocation diversification. So this slide shows it's kind of breaks it down a little tighter under one year. 23% of the portfolio is under 30 days. And then the remaining is distributed out across your maturity buckets with a nice weighting in the one to two year area. So this again is just portfolio management diversification to make sure we have something in every basket. And then your overall earnings, now this includes bond proceeds and bunch. We were up by, last year you earned 28 million on all the assets we were managing. And this year about 36. That's not just your operating account. That's the combination of some, but we had a good increase in earnings number for the portfolios, which is growth and which is the objectives of maintaining discipline in the portfolio. And then this is our accountability to you. So we do track performance. So if you go to any, you know, if you look at your retirement plans or you look at any, any way you're investing, you always want a benchmark to be comparing that to. So GPA implements a very strong discipline to managing, establishing a benchmark. This is what you're telling us to manage to. And then our performance numbers should be very close. If you saw us performing at 1% over this benchmark, you should be saying, then you're taking on more risks than we've given you. So we are very key on making sure that we structure our portfolios and are transparent. That's what's happening to those. And then just a couple more slides here for you. This is your historical balances. So I like to look at this last year to this year. Is that eight, eight, one, six? Yeah. So you're, you were at 865 million at the end of last fiscal year. You ended this year at 857 million. So you have not had declining rates, balances in the portfolio. And you have grown a lot. If I went back, our data goes back to 2019 for your holdings portfolios. John and I were just playing with those numbers. But we've got good data on the county and how those monies have been managed. And you can see that monthly interest income is pretty consistent right now. Again, I do expect these to start to drift downwards. We're reinvesting lower than we have been recently. So I'm excited about these, but we have a nice anchor that it won't. If we hear about the Fed funds rate dropping significantly, we won't go down as fast as we'll see the state will go down. And that's really kind of it. I kind of go fast when I talk, but the key takeaway is we know you have a lot on your agenda or statute and best practices. Your policy is aligned to that. Everything looks very good. We're very focused on your cash availability and make sure that the dollars are always on hand for your needs. We're focused on earnings and optimizing that. And then it's the ongoing teamwork between us and your team to make sure that we have a pulse on what's happening here and making sure you're making those diligent investment decisions.
So that's it. Okay. Good time to open things up for questions and comments. So I'll go last, board members. Unless board members don't have something, go ahead, Jerry.
Go to slide 12. I'm surprised by the peak of the green there, realizing that's when we get our assessment taxation money. But I'm surprised it is so sharp up, sharp down. So I would have expected it to have a longer runway. So.
Right. This is the, the county tax. So it comes in and we distribute it out to the cities and the municipalities. So it comes in, goes out, and then we keep our counting.
And they get it pretty.
There, right. So that's why you see a large peak quickly in.
Not just the county allocation.
Yeah, I guess I didn't, I didn't think it was that severe of a outgo.
It is.
The money that we send down.
Yes.
Can we send the cities a IOU or something? Short.
No. No, I don't think so.
No, there's a school's not that smart.
Let's go to 19. Can you explain the difference between accrued book return and fair market?
That is a great question. So accrued income is what you actually allocate out to your, your people within your, the county. And it's your interest income, your coupon postings and any amortization accretion off of the bond you bought. So we buy a bond not at 100, we buy a bond at 99 or we buy it at 101. That's part of your earnings and that's called your accrual income. Fair market value incorporates change in market rates. Fair market value, we were just talking about this, is what you do have to post on your act for every year. You have to show a reflection of the mark to market value change. A Gatsby rule came in in, I don't know, 1990 or something. And it was very, people didn't like putting the change of market value, but it's a reflection of risk. So we, we report it both ways. And that's just a one trap. We watch, we watch that, you can't spend that. That's money of value that's appreciated in the portfolio. We were negative all the way to 22 with interest rates coming up. So it's just transparency. But you don't spend that. That's your just change of value on the portfolio.
Well, I think the important part about the fair market return is the last line. The return for the period, obviously from 24, it was 4.47, now it's 5.68. So so we're doing a good job with that. So you talked about bond rates. And I don't know if we've gone out for our $75 million bond rating. I think I thought we had, but so how?
I missed it.
Yeah.
We received a trip away.
That's going to say, I think I've heard this before. But yeah, so, and I know that in a favorable bond market, we go out for a bond and we actually get more money than we go out for.
The premium.
Right. So is that, is that kind of where we are with that? Did you have anything to do with our 75?
I took, I invested the money.
She invested the money. So we, we went with our broker consultant advisor, Piper Sandler, to do the bond issuance. And so that's, that works through that. And the money comes in. And we turn it over, coordinate a plan for spending that with Stephen and his crew and in our investments. So we have blocks of investment that come over time to pay out the requirement for the bond.
Yeah, well, and I realize that. I was just wondering, because several years ago, we did, I was on the bond committee for the schools capital bond. And they went, thought they would go out at 450 or something. They actually got like 490. So is, is there any of that possibility with us as what we did with our bonds? Or we just 75 million and it's 75 million?
Well, I was 150 million and, and I think that premium is due to our credit rating. So our credit rating goes down and our investments are in bad shape, that ability to get that premium goes, goes away.
But also I think we have the record of if in that issuance, there is a premium, then that premium continues to apply towards the transportation project list because constructive costs.
I, I get that.
All over the place.
I was just hoping that that was the case, that we were getting the premium on our bond offerings primarily because we are AAA.
Yes.
Do we need to say that again? AAA.
Cause I want to ask something else on your slide 19.
Okay, jump right in there then. Okay.
So could I, I just want to make sure that I understand. I believe I understand, but I want to check my understanding. So is the, the accrued book return and the fair market return differences? The, the, the fair market return, if I understood what you said, is just reflecting because of the inverse relationship between interest rates and the value of, of, you know, some sort of a bond like instrument. This is just reflecting the, the book value of something we're liquidated today with the current yield and the value therefore. Is that correct?
Correct. You bought.
And the accrued is what is kind of real.
That's earnings, right.
Yeah.
So if you sold everything today, you would capture a higher value in the bonds that you bought than what you paid for them.
And right now that's true because interest rates have been decreasing. When interest rates increase, it's the opposite problem.
Correct.
Okay. So that is really just what's reflected.
Change in market value. Yeah. And that, and you're exactly right. If you go today, tomorrow it's going to be different.
Right.
I'm good. Go ahead.
You mentioned that the investments are ESG investments.
We do, we do an ESG filter. Frank kind of runs this for us, but we take our corporate allowable list. And then we have an ESG filter that we use five different ways to do it off of our Bloomberg system. And we filter out, and the only ones that are really filtered out are Exxon, Vedon and there's one more. And it's all just banked based on ranking. We want to be able to answer that for our Oregon clients that we do have a filter to the ESG level.
And is that part of our investment?
I was just going to say that is part of our investment policy. And just for the audience, so the ESG is environmental, social and governance. So those things are run through that filter and that's how we capture that.
Thank you. Did you have any?
I don't have any questions. Great presentation. You do speak fast, but luckily there are a lot of great information accompanying this your presentation. So thank you.
So I have at least three questions. First, I would like you to give an overview of how this is, how we end up with a portfolio of dollars that has specific earmark needs. And how we're not just swimming in cash. I don't want people who are listening to this meeting or watching the recording looking at these slides and going, oh my goodness, the county is sitting on 857 million dollars of cash that could be put into action in our community. We have restrictions, right? You've already spoken. Well, you've already talked about the misstep bonds versus the payout, but feel free to repeat that as well as other things, right? I know we have a really tight budget. We work judiciously to make sure we have the level of reserves that we need to be a, an excellent county and have good financial policies. But the numbers here just seem so vastly different than what we focus on with our budget. So could you give an overview on, on how we have certain dollars in the portfolio and why that's a good thing?
That, that is an excellent question and one we're often asked because all of you have money and this money is dedicated to a purpose. And that's where I kind of started with that budget, that every fund line item within your organization is tied. So tomorrow you might have a, a road project that you're working on. And that road project isn't going to be spent tomorrow. It's going to be spent two years, three years. Or you have a housing initiative and that housing initiative is today is tomorrow, but it's, it's spoken for. So all that money is spoken for within your budget process. And then we make sure that one year and under, we know that cash flow and we're, we're investing that that longer, that 800 million is money that's all spoken for within your budget process. And then we're making sure that stewards with you, that that's being invested in a manner to optimize those earnings.
That brief explanation works for me. So then I was wondering, I didn't mark the slide. Let me find it real quick. Yes, going to slide number 12. That we went to earlier. Could you summarize for us? I see it now on the particular slide. We tend to use core, the word core for like a lot of core critical services. Could you anchor us all again in terms of, like you have it on slide 11, but what core is all about? Since it's more or less that steady state here in this chart.
So that's, that's another great question. So core is kind of a label that we use with. So that's, that's another great question. So core is kind of a label that we use within the industry of money that's not needed to spend tomorrow. It's a core anchor within the portfolio. And so we just call all of our investment portfolios that are not needed for daily cash, a core investment component. We try to stabilize it like your chart there is because the, if you think about all the ebbs and flows that are happening here at the county, that really will throw our strategy off and not allow us to maintain a discipline of average maturity and targets that we want. So we can tell you're using all that other money, that green line and that blue line. But that core is that money that makes up future, um, obligations. So the core is literally the core investments that really are here for a perpetual period of time.
Thank you. Uh, then I wanted to go back to slide eighteen. I got a little confused by this slide because the top level goes, it has the effective duration, years of maturity and then days to liquidity. So it, it wasn't quite max to min. But then the chart below goes for the effective duration from sort of mid to max. And so is this just the standard?
It's kind of, everybody kind of uses different terminology. In your policy, it's stated immaturity. So maturity is, everybody knows that. A bond is September thirty, that's a five-year bond.
Yeah.
So we tend to write our policies for that terminology. So that's what that year's.
Got it.
Is.
Yeah.
We did move yours last year, but we're managing your portfolio right now to one point seven five years. That's the average weighted immaturity.
Yeah.
Duration is what we use as a risk parameter in portfolio management. It's always shorter. More technol- technologies, technicalities to that, but it's basically always shorter, but that's what we use for price sensitivity. So those buckets below represent how much of your portfolio is exposed in each of those duration buckets. So it's mainly just people look, some people will look at days, some people look at years, some people look at durations. We just made the report. So however you want to look at it, you can have that measure.
So I know I said three, but actually I have four. Of, and, um, when the, so three of us joined the board in twenty nineteen. And I know we, we went through reading the, the investment, uh, report. But we had a pretty, based upon our experiences in the business world and prior, uh, elected bodies, we were a pretty mature board. Looking ahead in twenty twenty-seven, there will be two or three new members on the board. And I'm wondering, uh, this is the first time we've, as you mentioned, had you come in and give us this comprehensive report out. So I have my thinking cap on and, and I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-seven and beyond. Um, so I think, not that we have to answer it today, uh, but I think we should think about it. You know, strike while the iron's hot, we could do it today, but, um, we have to think about, would we recommend for a future board that, do they absolutely need to have such a walkthrough in twenty twenty-seven? I don't think so. We're very well served. But I think at the same time, if they're not familiar with, there's public budgeting and then there's public investment management and you're here on this primarily. Um, then if, if they're new to public, uh, agency work, then maybe they're gonna need it in during calendar year twenty twenty-seven versus later. Any thoughts colleagues?
You know, I, I, I'm reflecting on my own situation because I didn't come from a public body when I joined in two thousand nineteen. And I think, uh, while I understand the investment, all the investment concepts, I don't think it would have made as much sense to me until after my first budget cycle. I'm just saying that that doesn't mean that it, I, I think you just need some grounding across the board in that, that first year is such a.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you were to do it in like the same timeframe.
Yes.
October of twenty twenty-seven, then it would make sense. It would make more sense. I think we have a fiduciary obligation to be review, I mean, clearly we do, to be reviewing this. I, I don't know that it just has to be October of twenty twenty-seven, but somewhere in that timeframe.
It could, it could be, uh.
Probably makes sense.
I appreciated the investment policy document that was, um, it had a lot of good terminology. Some I was not familiar and it led me to your website actually. So, um, I think it's a good onboarding document to provide to new. I know when I was being on board, I got a lot of good information, uh, but I don't remember seeing an investment policy. Um, so it's a good information.
Actually, we've acted on it every single year.
Yeah, no, I'm saying my onboarding chair. My onboarding binder that I got didn't include a specific document that said policy, investment policy. Obviously, as a new board member, you sit down with every director and you get like full wealth of information about that particular portfolio that they're managing. Uh, but as a, as a newcomer, uh, this report was important. So I'm recommending, Tanya, perhaps we consider one of the documents to be, cause it's good, it's good to be familiar in these terminologies. As I was saying, it's not that I'm didn't get it.
There, there's not a recommendation for us.
Well, let's hear from our county administrator to see what is best practice.
Well, um, thank you, Commissioner. So your board continues to do foundation building. Um, in October, on October fourteenth, from Erin Calvert, Assistant County Administrator, you received an email that outlines process for us updating administrative policies and financial policies. To date, we have seven out of the fifteen DFOA recommended policies in place. Uh, that's not good enough. We need to get, get to the fifteen. And so I really want to commend both John and Sarah in their leadership for putting a work plan together to get us to that place. Um, and, um, I want to state the investment policy is only one piece. So that's where all policies really fit together to tell the story, um, and helps guide your role in, um, governance and financial oversight of the county. So it would be part of that whole package, but once again, investment is just one piece.
One more comment?
Sure.
And I do two, two comments.
One is in keeping with Tanya. It says our credit rating, that's an average credit rating of double A plus. So were we less than triple A? Were we double A or?
That's on your best.
Probably best.
On what you're holding.
Buy.
Oh, that's not our personal.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that we have this right, cause somebody would have got that.
And you're like at forty-eight percent US treasuries right now. US treasuries did get downgraded by Moody's this year to bring us down to that double A plus. So that, that's why it's a double A.
Okay.
It was, it was holding as triple A, but everybody knows what's going on with our federal government, uh, debt. So that's a reflection of that, but it is, we're still, that's what that is. That's different than your rating.
It's a little difficult, I would think, to do this with the current administration and the stock market. The stock market seems to be ignoring whatever is going on in our federal government. And, but yet it's gonna make your job harder, I would.
Not our job to me.
I do fixed income and I stick on the line of fixed income. And, uh, we can, we can manage that. It's, it is a very, the, the market, to speak to the market, is incredibly calm right now. The fixed income market is, um, we track where interest rates are trading in the tier, uh, maturity sector. Uh, we're sticking right at three and a half percent. So there's a whole bunch of stuff I could go into on inversion of the curve, et cetera. You'll hear that it drops and we get to a normal curve. So I, I, I'm hoping that rates remain around three to three and a half percent for the next couple of years. That would be wonderful, cause you guys would continue to earn nice attractive rates versus this environment that we hit when we have a crisis.
Yeah.
So it's, it, our market's been relatively quiet, um, given as much as happening.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
There's not a recommendation or from staff or any kind of a change.
Their recommendation was no change.
For, for the investment policy?
Yes.
Just because we, there was a big change last year. Yeah, the recommendation is not to make any changes.
I just wanted to hear that verbally.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do want to get on some cadence. I mean, this year, an annual review, I think this is really good, but the investment policy also calls for us to provide some quarterly reports to you and I don't think we can provide in those. So that's the thing that, um, the deputy CFO and I will figure out. And this kind of helps us set the foundation so that you understand a little bit upfront. And when we provide reports, you'll kind of understand what you're getting and if there's something more that you would like to see from the investment side, we can sort of provide that.
Could you remind us, why is it important that we also get a quarterly report?
Well, that's, that's the question I have. What's the right cadence? Right now in the investment policy, it did state that. So if we do want to make a change, maybe we talk about, um, what reports the board should get. Uh, we have the annual ACAFR, which provides all the details on our financials. And this review going through the details here. So do, do we need it quarterly? You know, if I see something that's a CFO that sticks out, then.
They read back to you about it.
I would like really bring it to Tanya's attention, your attention. Um, likewise, if they see something that's, something's not quite right, they would let me know and so. Is a quarterly report needed? That's, that's a good question, or is it as needed? Or, you know, certain conditions that we alert you.
Staff can take that back.
Yeah.
Take that under advisement. Um, I know when we send information to your board, you look at it and read it. And, um, it can be, leave a question of our, what are we supposed to do with this? And we don't want to create that impairment.
So is that quarterly reporting, is that in the?
It, it is. Paragraph thirteen talks about the reports.
So at some point in time, somebody must have thought it was important for quarterly, but we might.
This was put in last year and I just came on right as this was put in place.
It's a best practice. It's a best practice for fiduciary for the, the short-term fund suggests that you guys are the approvers of the policy. And so it is a best practice for you to see it at least quarterly, definitely annually.
Um, staff will take this back and, and we're a team and look at this. What I'm just gonna say is if we have it in the policy, we need to ensure that we can commit to that. And right now, we're obviously not doing that. So we'll talk as a team if that's feasible or, or necessary and follow up.
Yeah.
I think I'd be comfortable with staff identifying that there are no quarterly indicators suggesting that we need to be more watchful. Um, and just go with that. And then I would look at it more closely on an annual basis. But we are struggling as a board to attend to all of our required matters. And that's why I think that having to go through the whole report quarterly. Not, not do.
And that means, I mean, that means that you're getting it reported to you that everything's fine.
Right, just the nature of what we're doing and if we're following our policies, like this is, this is not gonna be a very, if it's being done well, not gonna be a very exciting piece of information. Now, if something exciting happens.
Certainly.
Or, you know, something changes dramatically, we'd want to know about it immediately.
Exactly.
But even then, it'd be more than before. I wouldn't want to wait a quarter to know that.
No, I wouldn't want you to, yeah, right. We want to know.
That's, that's, I guess, the balance. I don't even think quarterly is fast enough if something changes significantly.
So, um, who around this table of commissioners were elected officials during the heat of the great recession? At the global financial collapse?
Till, till end of it.
Yep. Well, no, I'm, I mean in.
Oh, when it happens? No.
Yeah, well, two of us were. Uh, I know I got more frequent communication from my public agency in terms of what was happening and indicators. So I have high confidence that our, our executive team would be knocking at our door.
Environment, you got, we weren't your advisor, but you would have gotten a memo saying, this is what you own, be aware. But, you know, it's not a need to sell anything, just hold on, but, but just that notification, that's what would be passed on to, to John to pass on to you.
Yeah.
I thought I heard you say two thousand eight, when Washington County got on your portfolio.
We started with, after, right.
After the recession.
We, we inherited, let me put it this way, we inherited some things, but we were brought on in two thousand eight because of that.
Yeah, and, and the topic, so I, I heard you say it's best practice doing this quarterly. How many other, so is that twelve counties or nine counties?
Here in, in Oregon, Multnomah County, their, uh, investment officer just sends a memo with the report. You can read it if you want and with the highlights on top of it. Uh, Lang County is doing meetings like you, but doesn't show the whole report, but is starting to post it. So I totally appreciate your ability to get through it all and knowing that the staff can get you to do it is, it's a lot. I just wanted you to ask me what the duration was when I walk in next time.
Duration.
Duration of the portfolio, cause you've been studying the course of it.
I was gonna say it's.
Favorite thing.
Duration of your presentation, no.
Oh, no.
Frank, is there anything you wish we had asked you?
No, actually, I really appreciate your question that, um, you know, at the end of the day, it's like the county has possession in these funds. We're earning on these funds and, you know, my wife is at a nonprofit, they do the very same thing. And it's like, well, we have all these reserves, kind of, we help more people. And it's like, yes, there's a purpose. We're planning on these purposes. This is, this is not just today, this is through the future. And the beauty of all this and why we're here, it's oftentimes what you're able to earn on it, which we are working towards, is kind of a bonus, right? So the fact that I think it was thirty-two million from this year, it's like twenty-six million. That goes and that can kind of sprinkle future, you know, opportunities and seeds of things that can be done for the county. So we don't often get that question. So I did appreciate that comment.
So, uh, carrying that thought forward, uh, if someone is looking for a list of what those future needs are, would they find that in the note pages of our ACAFR?
No, I think you would, it would be more a budget document, things that we're budgeting for going forward, right? So all tied into there.
Great. Um, an oddball question. Uh, any thoughts on our finally having a capital improvement program?
Size is about time. It's really important now and I've, I've had, because I have been with you a long time and the work that, um, these guys are doing to really dig in and get the capital improvement was so important, cause that will, that will move us around, right? And understanding, and again, just those questions with the department, I think was really got them engaged to understand why it's important to have that plan. Cause it matters, right? On how we're doing it. So I think that was very good, yes.
You hear that team, you're doing a great job.
Yes.
I know work is very hectic, but you're doing good work.
I think it's important to note though, as you pointed out, John, in your memo, the portfolio overview that the interest is allocated across the taxing districts and county funds. So that doesn't mean if it's up twenty-eight million dollars that our general fund just got a boost.
Right, right.
So, uh, I don't know how much of that is general fund money versus everybody else. But it's important to note that.
That's a good point.
We don't have twenty-eight million dollars of new money.
And, and as we do, our, we'll come back next month with our general fund forecast. And things we do look at are interest rates and what we anticipate earning, and that gets all plugged into the forecast.
Yep.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Hey, well, nice to be all of you. Thank you.
Take care. Okay, and now we're going to turn to a topic of entirely different matter. Uh, having, having some fun here in Washington County. So Washington County's partnership with the city of Hillsborough for future ball fields and potential RV parks at the Fairgrounds Sporting. So turn it over to our team members.
Thank you so much for having us today. This has been a project long in the making. I wanted to just call out that seated behind me are the city manager and the city manager for Hillsborough. I really appreciate Rahim's engagement in this process since I've been here. It's been a real pleasure working together as we've been trying to find a solution that works for our shared community. Uh, this has been, as I mentioned, several iterations, uh, that's come before different commissions over the last ten years, honestly. Uh, but at this point, we think that we have reached a general agreement about what could work for both. work for both of our agencies. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg and let him walk through the slide deck, and then we'll be here for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Greg Wyman. I'm the Facilities Division Manager here at Washington County. The purpose of today's presentation is to present information for the proposed partnership and lease between Washington County and the city of Hillsborough at the county-owned property at the Fair Ground Sports Complex. Provide an overview of the current 2019 intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county, the county and the city of Hillsborough. Review proposed build-out and lease terms for new ball fields and infrastructure for proposed RV park and parking lot improvements. Discuss options to include permission to proceed with negotiations with the city of Hillsborough under the current terms. Terminate negotiations on the project and discontinue the current use. Seek direction of the Board of County Commissioners on the proposed ball field partnership. Property details, history and existing government, intergovernmental agreement with the city of Hillsborough. Fair Ground Sports Complex consists of 20.69 acres. Washington County Fair Board, city of Hillsborough entered into a lease agreement dated 1975 for 30 years, which expired 2005. Currently, there's an IGA, intergovernmental agreement with the city of Hillsborough dated August 21st, 2019. There was a period in which the lease sunsetted and the current IGA was put into place, and that was just on a agreement to continue from that original lease. Current IGA with the city of Hillsborough covers the ball fields, tennis courts, parking area, and excludes the Veterans Memorial. Renews annually on January 1st unless either party provides notice of its intent not to renew. County grants city full access to use of the facilities except during annual Washington County Fair or other events. City can make upgrades and changes based on community needs, as long as it does not alter the intended use, and collect program fees and enter into agreements for advertising and sponsorships. The city maintains the facilities to city standards. This next slide depicts what the ball fields are, and those are at the corner of 26th Avenue and Veterans Way. And it just includes that portion that we're talking about today that they currently have and that we're currently proposing a new lease on. We have a few photos here, I'm just gonna kind of skim through those. I think most of you have had the opportunity to look at those. And then this is a broker opinion of value. We went out to the brokerage market and asked if we were to sell this property, what would be the value? And it's a little hard to determine because it is not specifically a commercial or retail use. It is more of a hybrid use because it is the ball field. So the best we can land on a broker opinion of value without going to a full appraisal is a price between 11 million 7 and 20 million 7, with the delta being right between 13 to 15 million. Conversations with the city of Hillsborough, they've agreed that the 15 million is an adequate and acceptable price between county and city as to what the value of that property represents today. They're going to put in over $20 million of infrastructure in order to develop these ball fields. Proposed development and lease with the city of Hillsborough, it would cover the new ball fields and potential future site for RV park. The initial term would be for 20 years. Rent in the primary term will be offset by the city's investment to develop the site, which again is approximately $20 million. Options to renew for a fixed period with a predetermined rent beyond the 20-year primary term. City to maintain all equipment, infrastructure and grounds. City to develop ball fields in accordance with a mutually agreed-upon design to include supporting infrastructure for a potential RV park in the future. City will build out restrooms designed to add showers for potential RV park. City will address wetlands mitigation required for this entire lot, and the rights for either party to terminate the agreement with certain conditions would be part of that lease. In addition to this, as we were negotiating and navigating what we would do on the ball fields, we had a question from the city of Hillsborough for some additional proposed development of a separately, under a separate lease with the county, and that would be for an area to the north here, which we commonly refer to as the north parking lot. It's currently undeveloped, utilized as overflow parking and livestock holding area for events. Wetland mitigation was completed during the wingspan development. City of Hillsborough would complete the infrastructure at their cost to include drainage, paving, curving, guttering, and for a fully functional parking lot area. Additionally, the city has agreed to dress up or to gravel and landscape the area between this north parking lot and the existing wingspan center so that as you drive down Veterans Way, you have a nice cohesive look. The proposed improvements would support use of larger trailers and contain biohazards associated with the presence of livestock. The county would have access to the north parking lot during fair and other designated events. In return for the city's investment, the county would do a zero consideration lease on this property for, for use of the parking lot, excluding events for the fair itself and other major events, which would be defined in that lease. This next slide shows that area in blue where the north parking lot is. The area in yellow shows where the city would also just clean that up to make that nice cohesive look. And then this is just an overlay of a proposal for the ball fields, yet to be determined, and it would be by mutual agreement.
And just to note, the yellow area is not perfectly aligned to the location, so we will be working with our partners before we actually detail the location for the yellow section.
Okay. Benefits to the county in alignment with Westside Commons Master Plan. This preserves the county's long-term land investment and development opportunities, provides valuable community amenities and ongoing maintenance without additional pressure on county resources, resolves the wetland mitigation requirements on the property at no cost to the county, improves livestock shelter function with hard surface parking and sanitation, and supports several of the long-term master plan developments. You'll see here on this next slide, it does show the master plan overlay, and there are, the ball fields are to the, the bottom left-hand corner there with parking. The area that shows 14 up there is where the parking that the city would develop. The area as 13 would be where the new buildings would be built, but right now, the city will just clean that area up. So it really does dovetail back in and ties into what the master plan for this area is. Timeline for the project itself is coming to this work session today in October. We would finalize the terms of the lease of the city of Hillsborough if that's what this board's direction is. That would occur in January. We'd come back in February with the consent agenda item for final lease document with your request for approval. And then in March, we would have an executed lease, which then spring 2026 would kick off the design review, public engagement, entitlements and permitting, which will take approximately one year. Then in spring of 2027, the project construction would begin, again, approximately one year to construct out these ball fields and the other infrastructure for the parking lots, and with a projected opening summer of 2028 for the public use. Board direction that we're seeking today is just following options, either permission to proceed with negotiations on the current terms, terminate negotiations on the project and discontinue the current use, or other ideas the board would like to bring up.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, we're going to open the table up to see your thoughts on these three different options. Could we just go back to that? So if you have any questions or opinions individually, I label them A, B, and C. Who wants to go first?
I can't. I appreciated the briefing that, I don't know, it was probably four, four weeks ago-ish now, that, wait, maybe it was a little bit longer than that, but that really helped me understand. I, I think what I saw today is really consistent with that. I don't think anything major has changed from what I've gathered. And I am glad that we have partners in the city of Hillsborough that want to try to help move this forward and have our broader community have amenities, and I am supportive of proceeding.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I could jump in on that, too, that I agree, this is a, this is a project I've wanted to see done for a long time, and so I'm glad that we're, you two brought this across the finish line, and thank you, Robbie, for working with us on that. My only request would be the north parking lot may be one of the first things that gets done so we could facilitate the summer of 28 fair, would be able to use that. We don't want that under construction during that period of time, because we park, the fair parks a lot of rigs out there. So if that could just be a consideration, but just a thought.
Happy to take that to our partners.
I'd just like to say thank you again for the same briefing. It really grounded me, although it took me back to the old days, before the wingspan was built and was on the advisory board. So this was always kind of out there into the future, and the future's here. So that's great. Thank you very much.
I'll jump in right here to say you have my permission to proceed with negotiations with the city of Hillsborough on current terms. That's thumbs up for me on that one.
Thank you. So I'm all in on permission to proceed, so it's nice to finally see this on the road to completion. So it's unanimous, let's go.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So that is it in terms, oh, and thank you to the city manager and deputy city manager for joining us for today and getting this work done. Thank you. That's it for today's work session agenda. Does anyone have any last things to close? Seeing none, we're hereby adjourned.